Good evening. My name is BJ Hall and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetland Commission meeting for the Town of Monroe. It is October 9th and the time is 7:03 PM. And for the Bloodline meeting.
Bloodline, United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation under God. Under God. With liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, the members of the commission and the staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, BJ Hall, present. Romano, Vice Chairman. Jim Stewart is not here tonight. Ryan Kelly is not here tonight. Mark Dingus.
Here.
Ross Mastaracca.
Here.
Eric Boonskam.
Here.
Rick Schultz.
Present.
Sarah Stroud.
Cheryl Valor, to be appointed to.
Oh, I thought we had to wait to.
Yeah, well, it's just.
I wasn't sure.
Because she's at the diocese, so I might as well just include her here. Cheryl?
Yes, here.
Very good. Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses with the Town of Monroe. Meeting procedure tonight. This meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1, as such. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title at the outset of each occasion that the person is speaking. And all votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. Chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. Tonight, we have a number of public hearings. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking questions. I'd like to ask the applicants to keep their presentations as concise as possible. Commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. The meeting will then be opened for public comment, first in person, then remote participation. I ask that all comments be made to the chair or to the commission. After and any all comments, pro and in opposition, or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given a chance to respond. We try to keep all questions and comments concise and under three minutes. It's not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments, pro and con, specific to inland-wetland-related matters. Other applications that do not involve public hearings will follow a similar format, except there will be no public comments allowed. Are there any changes to the agenda? Mr. Chairman? We're good. We will start then, tonight's agenda. First on the agenda, IWC 2022-13, 141 and 201, Turkey Roost Road. Five minutes? Construction of 90 single-family detached dwellings. I will note that Romano has recused himself. Construction of 90 single-family detached dwellings served by 5,570 linear feet of new road length. This is being continued from our last meeting. Tonight, our only activity is to introduce Russ D'Enzo, who is the new consultant. Russ, if you want to say a few words.
Sorry, technology.
Okay.
You can hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Okay, well.
Don't unmute yourself.
Yep, first I want to thank the Town of Monroe for once again thinking of me and retaining me as an outside consultant to the Wetland Commission. I've served on Roxbury's, Town of Roxbury's Wetland Commission for 30 years, as its chairman for 27 years, and still going. I am the Wetland Enforcement Officer in Bridgewater, Connecticut, for 16 years. I'm a selectman in Roxbury for, just got elected again, so it's 25 years. But my real job, the one that pays me to support my four children, is I'm a principal geologist at Arcadis. Arcadis has an office in Sandy Hook, Connecticut, which is where I'm out of. Arcadis is a global company, but we, in Sandy Hook, we do a lot of Connecticut work and a lot of wetland work, a lot of wetland mitigation. But really, our focus is environmental remediation. So that's it. I have read the files. I plan to go on a site walk tomorrow with the engineer, which I'll learn a lot more about this. And I'm up to date. I know that you need a report by next Tuesday. Or is it, no, it's next Tuesday. But the problem is, right now, there's not enough information, and I'm sure the commission might feel the same, to really make a judgment on this application. There's more information needed. And as you know, once you close the public hearing, there's no more information that could come in, we're cut off. So I was hoping that the applicant would provide more information, especially regarding the report from the Southwest Conservation District, which made some very good points, and points that I think are very pertinent to this application. I don't believe this application's incomplete, only because I've been doing this for 30 years. It's general, it's a general practice, and maybe it's right or wrong, I don't know, but it's a general practice to submit an application and for a commission to start asking questions at which the applicant continues to furnish that information that's requested by the commission. One thing I'll say is that the fact that this application was approved many years ago doesn't matter. It's a new application. And in this application, it said that there were no feasible and prudent alternatives proposed because this was previously approved. And that's a flaw, because this is a new application. And in the presence of a public hearing, the commission cannot vote positive on this application if a feasible and prudent alternative exists. So it's critical that the applicant understands that. The Southwest Conservation District made that observation also, and that needs to be done. Second is, the wetlands report by Davidson Environmental isn't giving me what I need to really understand what potential impacts there are. It says there's no activity in a wetland, I got that. It says that the upland review area's been disturbed. But a couple of things the commission should keep in mind is, wetlands have been degraded by gravel activities in the past. And that doesn't preclude the commission under court precedent of requiring mitigation where it's required. So what I want to focus on is stormwater, which is the biggest potential threat to wetlands. And I want it clearer, because I did watch the tape of the September meeting, and if I'm not mistaken, at the October meeting, there really wasn't much said, and here we are, it's November, flying by us. I think, I need to understand clearly, and I think the commission would agree, that where's all this roof drainage water going? How are these detention bases being designed? And one point of the Southwest Conservation District that I totally agree with is, the calculations are outdated from the previous application. Things have changed, they've changed a lot. Methods of determining stormwater runoff, it's all changed, it's all different. And I need to know from the engineer that it meets the present deep stormwater requirements, the guidance document, and that the methods used to calculate stormwater is using current, more updated methods. And I hope to get that information tonight, and if that wasn't a plan, that's not the plan. Tomorrow, I'll go and I'll do my site walk, I'll give a report, but my report's going to be lacking in that I need more information on stormwater and how it's going to be controlled. In the past, like 14 years ago, we used to allow applicants to use the wetlands as a stormwater renovation, for stormwater renovation. And we've all learned over time that that's not the way to go. Wetlands should not be used to renovate stormwater. That needs to be done before the stormwater, and that includes roof drainage water, water from the roads, any stormwater that's created needs to be renovated before it reaches a pond or wetland or whatever. So I haven't delved into the design yet, but I think it's important for the applicant to present to the commission those kinds of concerns in a very concise and easy way, so the commission totally understands what's going to happen with stormwater, how's it going to be treated? And because the potential impact, even if you're 500 feet away from a wetland, and I've seen this, is nitrogen and phosphorus get into wetlands from stormwater. And it doesn't mean that somebody's adding nitrogen and phosphorus, it means just by stormwater going through soil on its own could raise nitrogen and phosphorus levels into wetlands tenfold, tenfold. And if that happens, the wetlands go toast, you know, they, there's a lot of impact to wetlands, nitrogen and phosphorus are a big problem. So I'd like to hear more from the applicant, so I could learn more to understand this application. Thank you.
Mr. D'Enzo, what we're planning to do is hold a special session. So this gives you a chance to formalize your questions for the applicant, and we'll have a session where we can cover, after you've had your site walk and had some time to work on this.
Sounds good.
So I think it was discussed earlier, November 21st or 22nd. Mr. Commissioner Dingus, you were not here in the room, so we were discussing the dates here. Are you available for a special session?
I'm not available for either one of those days.
That's a Monday or a Tuesday?
No, I'm not available.
And Mr. Chairman, Jason Edwards is online. Jason, is that you? Does that date, do those dates work for you and your team?
I, Jason Edwards, for the record. I believe they should work. I just have to check with Dave Bjorklund, who's the lead engineer on this. I'm checking with him now, I should have an answer soon, hopefully, but I would say that we should be able to make something work.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a statement for the record. To accommodate the site inspection with the applicant, as Russ has indicated, which is going to be tomorrow, and we have good weather, time to prepare the consultant's report. It is recommended to schedule a special meeting on those dates of November 21st or the 22nd. It should be noted, next week, we try to get the 15th, the 16th, or the 17th. All of those dates have a conflict, either with me, because I have P&amp;Z on the 17th, and there was conflicts with the applicant or the consultant. So we had to go to the week of Thanksgiving, but I know the commission would like to get this public hearing brought to a close, you know, sooner than later, before losing it to the holidays.
And we'll need to check with the other two commissioners on their ability to make sure that we've got a quorum.
So we should tentatively schedule the 21st or the 2nd?
Let's say the 21st.
21st, okay, Mr. Chairman.
22nd.
And that would be 7:00 PM, gentlemen.
And until, we will continue this hearing until the 21st or 22nd?
Yeah.
That special hearing?
Yeah. A side note to commissioners, staff will make sure that the public is aware of that special meeting date.
Okay.
We'll probably do a legal notice. That is all.
Very good. So we are continued. Thank you, Mr. D'Enzo. Next item on the agenda is the continuation of IWC 2022-10, 467-485 Pepper Street, proposed construction of outdoor storage in the regulated area. This is continued from our last session, October 26th. And speaking for that application, we have, if I can introduce ourselves.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Robert Pryor, Special Engineer, Plant Surveyor with Solly Engineering. Here tonight, representing the applicant for 45 Pepper Street. We have tonight, Chris Palowski from our office, who will be doing most of the presentation. We also have remotely, Mr. Joseph Grasso, owner of the property. And I think what we'd like to do tonight, if it pleases the commission, is that we will go through, Chris will go through initially, some of the changes that we've made to the plans, just to summarize revisions that we've made to the plans, basically in response to some of the questions that were asked by commission members, and also some of the comments made by their engineering staff, the town engineer. I believe we've addressed all the comments from the town engineer at this point. I think there's something outstanding regarding bond, how the bond will respond on the property, I think already, or how that's going to work, but all the technical, all the technical comments that the engineers raised, we've addressed.
And I don't believe we've had updated comments, so.
I think we.
No, we have your comments. Nothing new from the engineer, so that's okay.
I'm not sure if we have a copy of the, of your latest response, but it was, he had basically crossed off everything that he checked off, everything he was looking at. Lastly, we move on to the architectural review board, we got positive feedback from the county board.
Comments?
You know, move it forward.
Okay.
And again, what we'd like to do is, as I said, have Chris go through the revisions to the plans. And then, you know, I know, especially Mr. Romano has questions regarding the operations, I think that's why we had Joe Grasso here tonight, really answer those questions and kind of summarize how this thing will operate with regards to some of Mr. Romano's questions, and maybe there's, you know, maybe there's, they can have a little dialogue there, everybody can better understand how this site will operate.
That's very key.
Okay. With that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Chris and go from there.
Okay, very good.
If there's questions.
Thank you, Rob. For the record, my name's Chris Palowski, civil engineer with Solly Engineering, office is located here in Monroe. Representing the applicant tonight, I just wanted to quickly go over some of the changes that we did plan-wise to respond to your comments. I'd also like to note that there are several things we submitted for the record. There is a structural review report on the green wall. That was prepared by a structural engineer, and it should be performing. There is also a letter from our soil scientist, Jim McManus, stating the area in front that we spoke on last time is not a regulated area. I know that one of the commissioners asked that we have that for the record, so we did obtain that letter there. There is also a series of revised plan sets before you guys, and I'm going to go into those right now. So to familiarize everyone again, we're at 467 and 485 Pepper Street. Rick, if you wouldn't mind sharing my screen? While he's doing that, Rob is correct. Rick, I don't know if you have the latest copy of Scott's comments, we just got them a few days ago, but he did cross off all his engineering comments. There was a bond on the property, it's part of the previous application that was posted, and his comment, the only remaining comment was to roll that over. So I don't remember the exact amount, but if the current bond recommendation is 50,000 and we had a bond of 25,000, he said that that should be rolled over and there should be a new bond of, let's say, the remaining amount's 25,000. I don't know those exact numbers, but that was in nature of his lone remaining comment from the town engineer. So to orient ourselves, we are at 467 and 485 Pepper Street, right up over 25, Pepper Street, and then it's on the northern end of town, closest to Newtown. So these are aerials of the property from a few years ago. This is 45 to the north and 467 to the south, and there is two wetland pockets in the back, one larger pocket right here, and one smaller pocket right here. Pepper Street runs north-south, and then you have the walking path or rail trail on the backside of the property there. So for you right now, it's a site plan. The comments that we received from you guys last time was a concern that during the operation of the site, material is being intake in this general area, that the loader would push the, potentially push the material over the retaining wall that we have here. So in response to that, we have mafia block wall that is going to be staked together with metal stakes. And then behind that wall, there is also a stone revetment. And then on top of the wall, there are PVC posts that extend six to eight feet above that, so if you're in the loader and you're pushing the pile forward, you will see the post theoretically, if it wiggles back, you would see it tilt while you're moving the pile. I have a detail on this, and I'm going to flip forward to it right now. So again, the loader would be here with the material piles that are intake to the site, and he's pushing this way, if you can imagine. And these are the staked mafia blocks here, and then you have a stone revetment behind. So there, these are about six to eight feet high, and then you have the PVC pipe sticking up above. So as a loader comes in, he's meeting the resistance of the wall and the stone revetment, and then he has the PVC as kind of like an initial warning strip to say, hey, if I can't see the top of that pipe anymore, then I push the pipe over and the block's over. And again, that shouldn't happen with the mafia blocks and the stone revetment, but we did want to give you guys some peace of mind there, that we do have additional safety guards in place to make sure that that doesn't happen. So, and again, this is the existing retaining wall. So this would be toward Pepper Street, towards the existing office building, and this is where the pile, intake pile would sit, if you were looking at like a side section per se. And that is right in the site, one sec. Here, right here. So this pile right here, and then the screener, and then this pile, these, both of these piles have a mafia block wall with a stone revetment, as I pictured on the previous side, and that can be found in your plan sets before you. We also added typical loader sizes here, large loaders, the one largest loader we can find, just to show scale. So this pile is approximately 3,000 to 4,000 cubic yards, and then that's the size of the loader, so you can easily get one, two, maybe even three loaders deep as they're working, you know, this pile, just to show that this area is actually quite large. There was also another comment from the commission in regards to moving the stormwater in this area, so we did slide that up. You'll see right here, the underground pension system is now closer to the office area. And that was also in response to the town engineer. He generally agreed to water the stormwater area, the underground pension system, out of this general vicinity and up closer to the office building. So builders and maintenance, there was other, Scott, there was a comments regarding the central floor drains in this building, and how the dust control works and the process of the site, but I'm going to refer to our client, Joe Grasso, to walk you guys through kind of how he's going to run this operation for the answers to those questions. So I think those are the major plan changes there from us, and the report from five scientists, soil scientists, and the structural wall. I believe those were the four things that Rick listed that we wanted to make sure that we covered and responded to from the last meeting.
Received those and they've been entered into the record.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to.
Why don't we just pause one second and get a quick round if there's questions here?
No worries.
Got a couple. Your detail for the wall and the pipe, is that both piled, intake and the screened?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a, that's a great improvement.
Thank you.
The one thing though, that, just, the question in my mind still is, how is the, where's the, how is the, you say you have the screener in the middle, but the screener's at least a two-product screener, if not a three-product screener. How is the stuff coming off the backside being protected, keeping from going over?
Understood, I'm going to refer to, or defer to our, to answer those questions. He's more knowledgeable on something that I have. Are there any?
That's it for.
Sorry, give us one second, are there any other questions?
I have no questions.
No questions?
No questions. Commissioner Dingus, any questions? We'll take that as a no.
No questions.
Very good.
With that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Grasso to talk a little bit about how the site will work, and I'm going to flip back to the site plan here. Joe, go ahead, I can move the mouse if you'd like me to, and point to several areas, but I don't know if you can see the screen on your end, you should be able to.
I can, I can, thank you. Good evening, Joe Grasso, 467 Pepper Street. So I heard a question you had regarding the screen deck at the intake pile? What was the question you had there?
Where's the, like, you have a finished product pile, you know, to the right of the screener, the way I'm looking at it, and then your intake pile, where's the, where's the, like, the oversize, is it a three-product or a two-product?
Well, it's actually, it's actually a two-product screener, it's a side-deck screen. There's one conveyor that will discharge the finished fill in the pile on the right side of the property. The tailings will come off the side of the screener and then be moved over to the one of the, we have one of those three bins there, yeah, thank you, Chris, as a tailings pile for reprocessing.
So the screener won't have a grizzly deck on it, drop in boulders like to the backside?
This, that will, it will, the grizzly, that we call it a crash deck, it will come off the side of the screen.
In which direction?
Towards, towards the office.
All right, so there's that, and then there's a conveyor off the back?
That's correct. So essentially, you'll have a tailings pile on the, yep, right in that area, correct. That will then get moved to one of the three bins, the raw product bins in that area. Essentially, the trucks would enter the 45 side, come in, get on, get scaled in, bring raw product to the first pile in that area. We'll have a stationary excavator on that pile constantly screening, you know, rock, concrete, what have you, creating tailings for reprocessing. If a truck comes in with, you know, straight concrete or rock, that will be directly distributed to one of those three bins. Those three bins, one is a tailing, tailings for concrete rock for recycled process, one is straight rock for rock processing, and one is straight concrete for concrete processing. There will be an excavator sitting centered between the building and one of those three bins to grab one of the three raw products and feed the hopper inside the building. The, the, then, the, you'll have your jaw, your cone, and your three deck screen inside the building, which will give you the, the three products finished, we'll be able to store three finished products inside the building. From that point, we, we would have three conveyors, stackers coming out of the building to feed larger storage piles.
A question on that about the, the loading of the plant. So you're gonna have a, a receiving hopper outside the building to convey it up into the crusher?
Yeah, either that or the, the crusher that we, we have designed can receive material from a loader, the hopper's big enough to load with a loader. We can have the, we'll have, there's, there's gonna be multiple openings on the building with high speed doors. The, the loader can, you know, can grab one of the raw product piles, come in from the side, load the hopper from the side. Or if we have, you know, a large enough excavator, it could sit centered at the back of the building, grab material from one of the three raw product piles, reach down inside the building and load the hopper. There's gonna be a
That's a big door.
Thirty foot door on the building.
That's a big door.
Yeah, the building is 35 to 40 feet tall, so.
You keep going.
Alright, Joe, so what about topsoil? How's topsoil gonna be handled?
Topsoil screening is, you know, we, we're, we're gonna, you know, one of these 15 bins that we have on the backside of the property, one's gonna be for raw, raw, uh, topsoil and the other will be for finished product.
And that'll be a different kind of screening operation?
Yeah, yep. You know, essentially we can use the three deck screener that we have, we have for rock processing to do topsoil screening. You know, we're, we're not always gonna be running, you know, running all three machines in line. We may be making, you know, one inch recycled material, one inch process where we can, we can, we can process sub base material and screen at the same time. There'll be multiple operations running at points.
Alright, so that's not gonna be, you're saying that's gonna happen inside the building? Or are you gonna move the screener out and screen topsoil?
The screens, the, the topsoil screening would happen outside.
Okay. You want, I could, I mean, I'd rather have him keep, use answering our questions from last meeting, so why wouldn't he just?
Okay.
Do you have any specific questions?
Well, I think one of the big questions was, you know, how is the dust control of the building going to be, you know, controlled so that, you know, it doesn't overwhelm whatever the system is? And then we're sure, you know, stuff like that, how's it actually gonna operate? Where is that material gonna end up?
So I, I, I guess the comment was made that, that, that there was, there was a flurry. There is no flurry. We're not the, the, each of them, each of the machines has a sprinkler system on the conveyors and inside the hoppers to lightly mist the, the material going into the hoppers and coming off the conveyors to mist them enough to keep the dust down. They're not misting them to the point where there, there will be an excess flurry. Yeah, all the material will be dry, dry, dry enough to process, wet enough to keep the dust down.
Alright, and then, and then, but the pro, but, so there's not floor drains in the building? It's not, it's not part of the design?
I, I mean, there, there will be drainage in the building, but there's no excess flurry. You know, it's not a wet, it's not a wet process, everything is, is relatively dry.
You're not gonna have rain, so the
Right.
But then the, but the process of, of taking the stuff that falls off the conveyor, the little, you know, the fines, the cleanings from the scrapers and whatnot, that's like, just like an outdoor operation with a?
Yeah, we, we, we have a, we have a hydraulic sweeper on site. The, you know, these are all mobile crushers, they will be moved out of the building. The sweeper will come in, sweep inside the building to, to, you know, maintain any of the floor aggregate. You know, it will get washed down from time to time with, with, you know, with the sweeper. But, but there's no flurry.
Okay.
Get you through the process there?
Uh, yeah, for the most part, I'm still kind of thinking of a couple of things, but if anyone else had other questions or there was more to the applicant that he wants to express.
If, does he, is Mr. Grasso?
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much the operation, you know, the, again, the trucks will come in. They'll, they'll, we have the scale here on the, towards the entrance, they'll get scaled in, they'll dump. They'll then rescale lightweight, if they're taking a product out, they'll scale again. And then the idea would to have, would have them, to be have, have them exit the 467 side.
Okay. I know there were some questions we had about the structural integrity of the wall. And we provided the report here, suggests the commissioners as we go, when we do a deliberation. If you do that, pictures looks very complete.
Thank you.
Not aware of other questions?
I have other things, so, so Joe, the, so not all the material coming in is going into that intake pile. Some of it, if it's like clean, clean rock, it's going right into the, one of those three bins.
That's correct, yep.
And that's just for mixed fill and whatnot?
Correct, yep. Any, anything with, you know, like a silty or any fine aggregates, we, we wanna remove that from the, from, create more bony material for, for recycled process.
Right, now, there's, I'm still just one thing about the screener in the middle. What is that, what's the, what is that layout gonna be again? You said there was a grizzly on it or impact bar?
It's, it's a side deck screener with a crash deck on it, so I should have given Chris a picture of it. It, it has one conveyor that takes all the fines and it'll, it'll send the fines into the, the right side pile. All, anything three inch or bigger will come off the side of the conveyor, off the side of the screener, be picked up with a loader and put back into one of the, the, one of the three bins there.
So it's more like a, like a shaker?
Yeah, that's right.
Now, I'm good now.
It's a shaker with a conveyor on it.
Right. Got it.
So did that, we had a question on intake material. Did he answer your questions?
Yeah, because it's, yeah, and part of it's, you know, majority, a lot of it's gonna go into those, those bins. It's already cleaned and, you know, they probably have a camera looking inside the body of the truck. And that's just for mixed film that they have to screen out before they crush.
And the, we had the question on the workflow, which I believe has been answered. I have a note here, oil, are we talking about oil storage on site? Is that where that came from? Fuel oil?
Yeah, the fuel, yeah.
Yeah, that's an interesting question.
Yeah, there was a couple of questions, there was a question about onsite fueling, I think. But I don't think, I don't know if that's the one, we talked about how
I apologize for my notes.
Yeah, no, it's okay, a fuel truck, I think, I think Joe said a fuel truck comes on site and fuels the vehicles, there's no, there's no
Dispenser?
Yeah, we've shown us, and actually, we've shown a spot
Yeah.
outside of the regulated area that he could put a, a fuel dispenser, onsite fuel tank if he needed to. And then the other thing was about the, I think it was an oil grit separator associated with the floor drains for the processing building. And I think we talked about, so, one thing we did do, and I, I think Chris had mentioned it, but we did increase the pipe sizing going into that because we're got, you know, so, so to avoid potential clogging of that. But I think Joe's comments and his description about how, what you're really getting off the, is helpful. I don't think there's gonna be as much sort of runoff into the floor drains as maybe we, we had initially thought, so I think
Right, and you said, you know, grit separator, you're thinking it's getting, you know, some of the stuff is gonna wash into it. But, but what is the size of the tank that's gonna hold, a holding tank?
I'm sorry, for the
For the, for the grit separator.
I don't have that on yet, I wanna say it's either 500, a thousand gallons. We, we can provide that.
What's the process for maintaining that in the schedule? That would be the, I think that was
So if somewhere, so in the setup drawings, there's a, we have a, we do have a sort of operations and maintenance narrative. And we don't specifically call it the oil grit separator, and we'll add it, you know, but we do, what we do call out for the, for the hydrodynamic separators is that they'll be cleaned out when they achieve 75% of capacity, which is pretty standard.
Yep.
Now, we don't know, right? But they're gonna have to monitor this on a daily basis until they figure out how often
Right.
And it'll change as they do different processing
Yeah.
operations, so it's, it's gonna have to be monitored and, and it'll be, it'll be, it'll be sucked out with a back truck. You know, that's, that's how that'll go in, because that's, that's
Yeah, we have a full operation maintenance plan, sheet 2.21 describes the majority of the structures and stormwater and how they're maintained and what frequency, so.
It's definitely a clear picture at this point. It doesn't seem like, you know, almost everything has got some kind of good, at least a that, you know, a proposal of something that's gonna work. We talked about inspections last meeting. Obviously, especially with something that's, you know, new and, 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 you know, we haven't seen it before. Plus, you know, there's, there's a lot of wetlands here. Have you any thought about, like, what, or from our side, what a fair schedule would be for that? And, and what the, like, result of something we're not, according to the plan?
I, I, I think the applicant would be open to having, you know, obviously having periodic inspections until you get to a point where you understand how the thing So, you know, when you start, it's probably, you know, maybe once a week, once every couple of weeks. And then as you get, as we get, and we certainly can file reports with the town against what we're seeing. And then, you know, as, as time goes on, you know, it probably won't be needed every, you know, maybe it's once a month, maybe it's once every couple of months, you know. I, I think we are open to some, some condition by the commission for some inspections and I, you know, I can't speak for you, you kind of have to tell us what you'd like us to do. But I, that's kind of the way I would see it.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's more awesome. Alright, I, I think I'm good at this point.
Okay, any questions here?
No questions.
No questions. Any further comments?
No, we'd like to open up to the public and
That's what I was
Awesome, thank you.
Just going to suggest, thank you.
Thank you.
So first we'll ask for any public comment that is vocal to the room here. Do we have any public comment on this particular application?
Would you, should you have asked Clark if he had any questions? Apologies.
Commissioner Gingras, any questions at this point? Before we go to public comment?
Muted.
Commissioner Gingras, are you there? You're muted? We're gonna
That's self muted. That's self
Very good. We're about to go to public comment, so do you have any questions before we do that?
No.
Okay. We'll go back, any public comment to anyone local in the room? Okay, if there's any public comment from users remote, please identify yourself, make yourself visible, unmute. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? Apparently we do not. Okay. Do we need to move this to deliberation? Okay. Do I have a motion to move it to deliberation?
Motion to deliberation.
And a second?
Second.
We have approval?
Alright.
Clark, can you verbalize that for us?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, we have a new hearing at this point, IWC 2022-14. 207 Spring Hill Road, proposed development of industrial warehouse with associated driveways, lots, drainage and utilities. We have someone speaking for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I need to read the legal.
Very good.
And indicate the exhibits. Midland Wetlands Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held November 9th, 2022. To, concerning the following, IWC 2022-14, 207 Spring Hill Road, proposed development of industrial warehouse with associated driveway lots, drainage and utilities. And this legal was published in the Voices twice. And the exhibits, Mr. Chairman, are the, number one, the application set and plans, two, engineering comments and the bond estimate by the town engineer, that is all, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
And Mr. Chairman, the return of the certified mail. We get this part of the record and so noted. I believe we're ready for the presentation then?
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Luke Barrow. I am a senior project manager at Soria Engineering, Office of, well, it's our title one, Main Street in Monroe, Connecticut. Professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, also professional traffic operation. And I'm Alex McGulis, or my team, and we will walk you through the proposed development at 207 Spring Hill Road, which lies in both the, and Trumbull. For the record, just so it's known, we did close out our wetlands hearing week in Trumbull last week. And we will be proceeding, I think, with only approval as well in Trumbull in short term. Representing our client with State Solutions, I'll see, 60,000 square foot warehouse development at 207, uh, sorry, Spring Hill Road. And I'll hand over to Alex to kind of walk you through the system conditions and the design.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Alex McGulis. I'm a civil engineer at Soria Engineering, at Main Street in Monroe. Representing State Solutions, I'll see. This is the existing condition survey where it's supposed to be on the Spring Hill Road. As you can see, the site is divided using the
Yeah.
Try to explain. It's bisected by the Trumbull and Monroe Town Line. There it is there, about 450 feet north of Spring Hill Road.
So that's Trumbull to the right side?
Trumbull to the right.
To the left.
Uh, this site is bound by residential uses to the north and east, as well as a church to the southeast. It's actually on Trumbull property. And then to the south is Spring Hill Road, and that's the last, it's another residential property. Uh, there is approximately 0.76 acre flatlands on site and approximately 1.39 acres of wind review area. That is within the Monroe town limits. Here is our site plan, which shows a proposed industrial warehouse, approximately 16,125 square feet. Essentially, it'll be more of a glorified garage. It's going to house materials and equipment. That's essentially it. There's also an associated parking lot with 28 spaces and then an outdoor travel, outdoor storage area. Approximately 0.2 acres of wetlands will be directly impacted as a part of the highway construction. Approximately 0.79 acres of wind review area will be disturbed. And approximately 0.79 acres of upland review area will be disturbed. This is our grading and drainage plan. Our grading was designed to mimic existing drainage patterns, which right now run off flows to the west and south towards the existing wetlands. Building and parking lot areas will drain to a catch basin and eventually to a for bay for overflowing into a detention basin, which will then overflow to an outlet control structure before flowing into the existing wetlands. A small portion of the driveway towards the building does flow down the driveway to a new hydrodynamic separator, which will then direct flow into the wetlands after that. Like to stop. We have a two phased SEC plan for site prep and construction. We have steel fencing with A-bell backing lining all wetlands limits. We obviously have our area for soil stockpiling and staging area and a temporary diversion square to capture any runoff that's flowing west towards the adjacent property. This is the second phase of the SEC plan. As you can see, we still have steel fencing with A-bell backing and we also have some outlet protection for catch basins and for our piping to get into the for bay. This is our site utility plan. All utilities, with the exception of sanitary, come from Spring Hill Road to the south. For sanitary, we do have a septic system that was designed and approved by Monroe Health Department. And we have a planting plant here with skirt barriers along the driveway. We'll be resewed with wind control seedless and seedless planting proposed in the parking lot and along the berm between the detention pond and the existing wetlands.
With that, it kind of concludes our presentation. It's fairly straightforward. As Alex had mentioned, it is State Solutions, as you know, kind of at first, they do estate sales for houses. So majority of the items being stored in the warehouse will be furniture, any other household items, outdoor storage area, maybe some patio furniture, anything that you might find. No, no toxic materials, no construction equipment. As far as deliveries go, they're thinking a box truck, you know, a small box truck. So it doesn't need to kind of any like a full size tractor trailer or anything to that effect. Right now, they're envisioning dividing that building into five units. Could be from, you know, five, five different clients they might be working for at, at any given time. Or potentially, if they didn't need it all, they may look to rent some storage space out too. So we may need something bigger than we would be able to find, like a self-storage facility, but generally just give you most of a storage mechanism. In all honesty, those 28 parking spaces are pretty overkill. However, we need 23 to be compliant per code. He was more than happy with, you know, five or six parking spaces. If we didn't need them, we wouldn't be providing them, but we need them to be compliant with the zoning.
Can you talk to us a little bit about the outside storage?
Sure. So the intent is just to be like, you know, a gravel area, five, six inches of, of, you know, gravel. It's, I think it's about 50 feet wide by about 200 feet long or so. You know, just, you know, in, in the case you need to store, you know, some, some equipment or some stuffs, materials or stuff that, you know, no, no construction materials, no fertilizer, no, you know, or anything. Nothing that would be toxic to the wetlands or to the store or pond there. Just, you know, anything that they may get in a communal vehicle or something like that. You know, something around those patio furniture that they may get on estate that may be larger oversized and wouldn't go inside the building itself or could be kept, didn't need to be climate controlled, can be kept outside. Probably five or six inch thick gravel section.
And all this, these items, these are state items, this is, so this is temporary, moving in, moving out?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Until we, I don't know if they're sold at auction or what exactly. They actually have their current facilities on enterprise and he's just kind of outgrown it. He just needs a larger facility.
What was the total square footage of the building?
In, in area? 16,125.
Questions? Mr. Landstrom, start with you.
No questions at this time.
Okay. I'll go to Clark before we forget him again. Commissioner Gingras, questions?
Yeah, where's the runoff from the warehouse for water? Where's the drainage? I want to see that again.
Sure, yeah. So there's a roof lid to be collected via roof leader, piped to a catch basin structure, which will collect the runoff from the parking lot. And then it flows into a separate for bay, which is sized to treat the, treat the water quality volume. So essentially, this is deep enough to treat the water quality line where it's like a solar quality manual. And that will overflow via a berm into the larger detention pond before it outlets from the outlet control structure. And then off, an emergency spillway as well. So it is, yeah, it's not, not, not just running off, it'll be collected and, you know, piped into the network. So it's technically already clean, but it'll also be treated in the separate for bay.
So the, so it's 338 to 337 to 336. So anything, anything with the parking lot is going to go through the gravel and then go into? All right.
No, actually, it's, it's kind of hard to see. Let me see if I can zoom in here. It's actually pitched to, to, to do a, to form a channel line essentially on the edge of the gravel. So the gravel is, let me see if I can zoom in here for you.
All right, so it's not going to go, it's not going to just flow through the gravel and go?
Correct, no, 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 that's going to all be, it's going to be curved. So you can kind of see the brake line, the contour here. I apologize, it's a little bit difficult to see with the hash there. But essentially, we'll have a gutter line, if you will, on the, on the page west side of the, of the gravel. So it'll essentially form a channel down here, a channel down here, and then it'll all cut to the well point.
Okay.
It's not intended, it's not intended to run over and then directly into the basin. It's intended to be captured over here at the catch basin and then treated by the separate for bay.
All right, so it's not going to, the gravel, the gravel is not going to get super wet and then move, start moving, all right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And it's, it's a flat area as well. It's about 1% or so, so it's not steep, it's very shishy.
Okay. Okay.
Commissioner Ramon?
Yeah, the, were the other, you said there's potential alternative uses for the building that?
It's, it's not alternative uses, it's just other tenants, right? That, you know, using it for similar uses.
Essentially a large scale storage warehouse, if you will. So he's, he's going to, he's going to, the thought is build up five, you know, a couple of demise, four demise walls, so five, five separate, one larger building with some demise walls inside. The intent would be, you know, if, if business is good, he doesn't need to, you know, he doesn't need to, he'll, he'll use it all himself. But in the, in the off chance, he may, you know, he may have some capacity, he may look to, you know, do a monthly lease or something.
You could rent it out to somebody that's going to bring in equipment and park it in that storage area. If he's not, you know, if his business model is just estate stuff, you know, home goods, whatnot, rents it out to somebody else, construction company, landscaper, anybody, they can be starting to store stuff outside that we're not.
The intent would not be to do that. That's, that's not, that, that's not the, not the intent.
There's a stated restriction on what can be put in that area that could be part of the approval?
Uh, I think that would be, that would be fine. We would be agreeable to that.
Are there bathrooms in each one of those units?
A small office space.
Small office space.
Yeah, so.
Oh, in the front?
Over in the front, yeah. They're all, what do you call it? On the first page, they're, they're really small, a couple hundred square feet.
Yeah, it's only about 300 square feet per.
Correct.
It's essentially for, you know, after the day of work, come in, do some paperwork. No one's going to be there full time.
Right. So we have not submitted to planings always, we don't have flood plans architected yet, but I would imagine one, one battle for the flood. So not on for each. But this, it's not going to be jumped in.
Do you have other questions?
I think it was more of like, what, what are you guys proposing would be in that storage area? Or you're looking to have approved to be in that storage area when we go to, you know, put a condition on, on, at approval say?
Yeah, like, you know, so we'd be agreeable to no construction, we have a quite a lot of stuff like that. It would be, you know, anything.
Well, you said no toxic items, so does that mean like oil in a vehicle and an engine, gasoline in a tank?
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's not intended for storage of construction materials or vehicles or anything to that. It would be, you know, yard supplies, how do you sense? You know, anything you, you would see in an estate sale, that would be typically kept outside.
But that's if he's not leasing the building out to another state person. So we want to give you, if we want, if we're agreeing to give you, you know, approval with a condition on it, we have no time in that condition. And your, part of your presentation was nothing that was chemical, toxic or anything. So you kind of got to clarify for us so that we give you what you need and we don't, you know, and we, but we also have to be cognizant that that has, you know, is an impervious surface. So if someone's, I mean, do you have recommended language, the language you guys would normally utilize for? I don't know if there's really had a situation where, or that I know of, where talking about storing, you know, furniture outside versus in a, in a, in a, on the edge of a parking lot, usually it's, you know, dump truck or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean? It's, uh, so it, it's kind of wide open at this point. You know, if we were to say, if you're saying nothing toxic, then that would mean that nothing, you know, obviously people don't store gasoline on the ground, it's in a container.
Yeah.
A fuel, a fuel tank in a vehicle is a container. So, you know, an engine, a, a, a oil pan is a container holding, you know, oil. So if you're saying that's, that's good to put in as a condition, that blanket, nothing toxic going to be over that area, then I think that's okay. But if that's going to not work for your client.
No, I mean, I, I, if, if we're limiting to like a, I guess the question is what defines toxic substance. But I mean, it's not, it's not intended to be like fertilizer or, you know, or chemicals.
Rick?
Yeah.
Does the town have language that might be appropriate for this or?
Even better, is this planning and zoning responsibility to?
It's clearly both, but we can provide some language.
Yeah.
You understand the question?
Oh, absolutely. I, I think that if it were to be vehicle storage, you'd have to treat it like with the, with the oil separator stuff or, or, or have it paved, right? At least at this moment, you know, they can always come back in.
Pave it if we want it to be.
They always come back in. If we have a tight condition about what's stored out there, they can come back in and propose to have it paved, put, you know, whatever type of protections, you know, in the ground or, you know, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you, you're raising a good point. We, we have loosened the zoning regs to allow 40% of outside storage area. Land use boards now are going to be confronted with what's going to go on it, like you have with the stone bar. That was just their material, it was clean. And as Keith indicated, if you have vehicles, we have to address those.
Yeah, there's fuel. Point there's no controls about what would be placed on that.
Right. So this is something we have to deal with now and in the future, so.
Okay.
So, you know, when we get to the deliberation part, well, we'll have to give that a lot of thought.
Okay. Yeah, that would be a good place for it. And potentially some language from the talent term you that might cover here as well as future.
Because you're going to be seeing more of this with the regulation.
Yeah. I, I do have a question on the gravel. Why gravel there as opposed to blacktop or?
Some, some pervasive surface, you know, it's less, less runoff. It's essentially to try to control and reduce our, our runoff values because it's somewhat pervasive.
Okay.
That, that was the intent behind it.
Okay.
That's all, yeah. Trying to, you know, reduce as, as much as we can flowing to the, and keep the size of that pond small, was the intent.
Okay. And the back of that gravel area, that back line?
Yeah, curb.
How is that constructed? Is it, is it something?
Yes, it's, it was five or six inches asphalt, let's not spell that. So it would be surrounded by asphalt and curb.
Well, you can't have asphalt and curb on gravel.
No, 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 not the extent, and then, and then you'd have gravel.
Is that shown somewhere in the plans here? It'd be nice to see a horizontal view.
A section.
There's a curb around the gravel area.
A curb, yes.
Yeah, that should be a concrete curb.
My apologies, it is a concrete curb. We're calling it a concrete curb, I'm sorry.
And did you say with a fence? Did I mishear that?
No fence, no fence.
Just, just the concrete curb, right?
Yeah, concrete curb, I'm sorry. And there should be a detail for the concrete curb. It's, it's not said.
Okay. Any other questions? Wetland markers?
Sure, wouldn't be opposed to placing them as a condition of approval. I'll follow along with that. Typically with every 50 feet, 25 feet, how do you guys typically?
What is that gravel areas, what, 200 feet, you said?
Yeah, so maybe six is on fire, six is.
There is a detention pond between there and there, so it's not like it's very easy to get over there, but.
In the interest of, of maintaining that detention pond clean, I don't think we'd be opposed to marking on the upside of the detention pond if, if the commission so desired.
It's going to be tough to plow that gravel, five, six inches of route. Snow, you know, it's going to be everywhere. Any suggestion for better surface? I'll just, I think gravel in the winter time is going to. Yeah. It's a challenge, you know. Okay. Mr. Gingras? Any questions?
No, also.
Okay. I guess at this point?
Is this public?
This is public here, so. That's why I'm just debating, any other questions here?
No questions.
Okay, so we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone who may be in the room who wishes to comment on this, please come forward and identify yourself. And we'll ask if there's anyone remote who has any comments, public comments on this application. Please take yourself off mute since we can't see you there. No one? No one coming forward or asking to be heard? So do we have a motion to move this to deliberation? Do we have additional questions which require a continuance? I don't see like. Okay, do you have a motion to move it to deliberation?
Make a motion that we move it to deliberation?
Do I have a second? Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Jim.
Move to open this hearing. IWC 2022-15, 125 Garter Road. Proposed regulated activity within upland review or excavation and filling permit. Before we open, or as we open this, I do want to make a comment for the record. I visited the site today. It was an active site. There were two screeners working, large piles of gravel. In the 10 minutes I was there, there were two trucks coming in dumping. Uh, in the 10 minutes I was there, there were two trucks coming in dumping topsoil.
A big loader moving product around the site. Uh, I don't.
I'm not aware and maybe.
Yes, staff has, there's a cease and desist order on this subject property.
A current cease and desist order?
Right, resulting in the submission of this application.
Okay.
Both to the wetlands and to the planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
As the commission is aware, Mr. Rossell does use his Pepper Street for staging area. Uh, I don't know if he takes equipment there from the Pepper Street, but you'll hear that from the applicant, I'm sure.
I just want to make sure we're on the record with it because it is an active work site.
Would you like to begin?
Mr. Chairman, read the, all the hearing and the exhibits. Uh, inland wetlands commission Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held October 12th, 2022, uh, regarding application IWC 2022-15, 125 Garter Road, proposed regulated activity within upland review area for excavation and filling permit. Uh, this was published twice, uh, September 28th, October 5th in the voices. Uh, exhibits, Mr. Chairman, include, one, engineering, uh, comments from the town engineer, exhibit number two, certified mail receipt return. Exhibit number three, revised plans, uh, from solely engineering dated 10/14/22. Four revised plans from solely engineering dated, uh, 10/19/22. Number five, engineering comments and bond estimate, uh, from his report dated 10/26/22. Exhibit number six, revised plans from solely engineering dated 11/2/22. Uh, and exhibit seven, uh, wetland delineation, uh, letter, uh, from the wetland consulting, uh, dated 11/2/22. And that is all, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. We're ready to proceed with your presentation.
Good evening, commission members. On behalf of the applicant, my name is Chris Palowski. I'm a civil engineer with solely engineering, offices located in 501 Main Street, in Monroe, Connecticut. I do have the mail receipts here for you, Rick. Before I get into the presentation, I did hear your comment about visiting the site and it could be, I guess, well, I apologize, I have not been out to the site in a few months, um, but for the record, I would like to state that our client is the Pepper Street reconstruction, uh, town's load contractor, if you will. And there may be, um, a load of material or two that goes in and out of Garter, so that's part of that project. That project is coming to an end. Um, and I apologize, I have not been out to the site, so I can't speak to what is going on out there, but I do know that he is finishing, our client is finishing the Pepper Street reconstruction project, and there may have been a truck or two, um, they are completing some paving and various other work to wrap that project up. So I, I'm guessing that's what that activity that you saw is a part of, but again, I apologize, I cannot comment on what exactly that activity is. So.
Okay.
So we're here before you for 125 Garter Road. We're sealing in the inland wetland department for regulated activity as part of an excavation and fill permit that we will be submitting to planning and zoning following the proceedings of this hearing. The site is located, uh, to the north of town Monroe, so this time take Route 25 north. Oh, yeah, sorry, Rick, would you mind sharing my screen? Thank you, Rob. So the site is located, uh, to the northern portion of town Monroe. So if you take Route 25 up to Pepper Street, and then you run down Garter Road, you will, um, approach our project site. So the project site is located here, as shown in yellow. Garter Road runs east-west in this direction. Uh, it is surrounded by a series of woods, I believe it was named by the state of Connecticut, an aquarium. Um, but there is a, uh, wetland body located to the rear of the site. So this is the blue line here, and this area, my coverage is all the mountains. So, um, our client has purchased the site, I believe, a year or two ago. Before that, there were various plans and approvals, uh, secured if you will, or, uh, in pursuit by a previous property owner. This went on for about 13, 15 years. Uh, our client had nothing to do with, um, those approvals or pursuit of such approvals. Uh, but this is the condition of the site in its current state. So there's entrance right here from Garter Road, then this area had been cleared and stripped, and then this is all natural, um, this, you know, pre-existing state, if you will. And this is how, uh, our client received the site from the previous property owner. So I'm going to run through our plans here. So we are proposing, uh, excavation and filling permit for this site. So as part of that, um, the topography on the site generally is high in this area. Um, and then it runs down across the site this way. There is some leftover material piles from the previous owner. I know it's hard to see in this general vicinity. And then it goes up, I would say, the 10 feet, um, before continuing back down this way. So again, this elevation up here is in the 465 to 470 range. The, uh, existing, you know, main area of the site here is around 430 to 440, and then it's around, uh, 430, 435 on the southern end. So it comes down and it's relatively flat with some dips. There's a big pile here, and then it continues back down, um, to the west here. So in the rear of the site, as I mentioned before, is the wetland line that is shown here, tracing with my cursor, and then this area is the area of existing wetlands on the site. So our client's goal in the future is to develop this site as industrial property. In order to do that, the site, uh, the topography is, is unforgiving, to say the least. Uh, there's many troughs and dips and hills and valleys, and there's also a significant amount of, uh, rock and material on this side of the site. So our proposal is to come in here and cut down the site. So this area will be a rock face along this corner here, and there will also be an additional rock face here. So we're going to cut this down to a flat pad. And then, uh, in the future, there will be a series of industrial buildings, most likely one here and one here. At this time, we are only going for the excavation and fill permit. We just wanted to get this site, uh, to a state where it can be developed. And in its current state, like I mentioned before, the topography is unforgiving. Um, so we're seeking to, uh, correct that by essentially creating a flat pad here. So there will be a permanent construction, uh, anti-tracking pad at the front of the site here, under the site. Um, there'll be a trailer and a scale up here. Um, the site, the trailer, the trail, excuse me, the trailer and the scale, um, will be used, because this is going to be a strictly an export. Um, there will be maybe some material brought in here to stabilize the roads and whatnot, but they're going to be blasting, crushing, and screening, and then hauling off the material to bring this site down to grade. And I believe there is about 109,000 cubic yards of material that has to be removed off this site. So the elevation here is about, excuse me, 424, and then it goes down to 422, and then 420. And then we have a stormwater basin, uh, in this general vicinity. And then, uh, there is an ale control structure, which goes to a level spreader, uh, in this area that you see right here. So while we were looking, uh, to propose this activity here, prepare the site for future development, uh, we wanted to maintain a significant buffer to the wetlands. So we tried as much as possible to keep the disturbance within, um, that existing area that's already been disturbed. So we tried to keep, uh, essentially this area away from the wetland is where we would have the majority of our activities. Um, again, we did have to, uh, propose a level spreader and an alley for this tension basin, um, as part of, uh, getting closer to those wellens, but this distance is approximately 50 to 60 feet from the wetlands here. So this will all maintain, be maintained in its natural condition. Um, that is also important because in the future, as you are aware, the town of Monroe does not have sanitary sewer. So the septic, uh, in the future for this site, there'll be one area up in this vicinity outlined by this box, and then there's another potential area here or here. Again, that's going to depend on the future development for the site. So generally, uh, from a stormwater standpoint, the water will be sheflow across the site here. There is a swale on this end of the site, and then a swale on this end of the site that will direct the water, and there's a berm on the backside here on both sides that will direct the water to the stormwater quality basin, which will then be treated and then outletted through ale control structure to a level spreader before discharging into the wellens. And all the stormwater shown on the site here has been designed according to the 2002 Stormwater Manual. So again, 109,000 and change cubic yards that are going to be, uh, exported from the site to essentially make a, uh, flat development path. So this is, uh, phase one of our soil erosion sediment control plan. Um, we, uh, have designed this so the stormwater basins and sediment traps are constructed first. So the applicant will come in, they will install their hay bale, they're still fed with hay bale backing, so you get the double protection, uh, in terms of any erosion and runoff from the site. Um, and then they will begin excavating the stormwater basin and the two sediment traps that you see here. Uh, we have a material stockpile here for any topsoil on the site, and then they will begin the, uh, blasting, crushing, and exporting operation. So they'll be cutting down this area of the site, as shown in phase two here. Um, and that material will be leaving the site. So we have the anti-tracking pad, the silt fed with hay bale backing, and two sediment traps, as well as a couple of diversion swales of stone check dams to collect that runoff while this operation is ongoing. So this is the pre-existing vegetation map of the site. So this box generally shows where the area has been cleared, uh, previously, and again, that was done by a different owner, uh, in the last 15 years before our, uh, current applicant implied purchase of property. Um, so you see this has been cleared, and then this is natural vegetation, trees, and then there is a series of, uh, trees in the front here and some overgrown, uh, brush, if you will. And then there are another series of trees here. Uh, we are, um, attempting to maintain and proposing to maintain as much of this existing vegetation as we can. Um, and again, we are keeping a 50 to 60 foot buffer in this area, it's almost 100 feet from the wetlands, um, while we conduct the excavation and exporting activities. And then again, this box shown on the far left of your screen is the existing wetlands on the site, and this is where it arose, running the bus. So at the end of, uh, the excavation and filling activities, uh, we will be seeding and re-establishing the entire site. So we're going to, uh, export, crush, and blast material, or blast, export, and crush material, um, after we've set up all the soil erosion sediment control measures, they're going to go through the operation. Um, we're seeking a five-year permit from planning and zoning. I don't know that it'll take five years. Um, a lot, a majority of the site has already been disturbed, but there are, like I mentioned, some significant areas that still need to be removed in this general vicinity, and then some down to the south here. And then generally, we have to bring the site down six to eight feet, uh, in the center. Um, so we're seeking a five-year permit at the end of, uh, the disturbance. We will be seeding and re-establishing the entire site. I believe, uh, in the future, when we come through the, another application, um, for site development, we hope to, um, establish a significant amount of, uh, landscape plantings and buffers all along the front here. And then again, you know, we are maintaining all this existing vegetation in between the wetland, um, in our limit of disturbance. So, yeah, one last thing I'd like to hit on is there is existing 50-foot, uh, front yard landscape buffer. We are not proposing, uh, any activities to that buffer. There might be some liner grading. Here, which plants or seeding would be re-established of such, but as you can see by these hatches in the front here, besides the construction entrance, we are proposing, uh, we are, we are proposing any activities within that front yard landscape buffer. And these are some cross-sections, uh, I can give you those in detail if you'd like. Um, but again, the east center portion of the site, in this general vicinity here, would be where the rock cut or the rock face would be. And then there's also an additional smaller rock face to the south. Um, so the pottery is high in this vicinity. It comes down, it's generally low in the center of the site here, and then there's a pot existing that are material pot here, and then it does go up and grade a little bit in this vicinity, but generally the grades are 465, 470 in this area, and then 440 at the road, and then it comes down probably at 425, 430 in the center here, and then 430, 435 here, but the road continues down, and you're at like 414, 416 here. So the currently, you know, the water, there's a significant portion that sheds to the wetlands that we're now going to be capturing and treating, and then the established part of the site in the front here with the vegetation sheds off towards, um, Garter Road, but we're capturing another portion, a big portion of that and treating it as well with the stormwater quality basin. So with that, these are the cross-sections. Uh, I will open it up to any questions or comments that you guys may have. Um, our wetland disturbance area, I want to say is less than a eighth of your right of how much that number is. So I'll often be very, excuse me, there is no wetland disturbance proposed as part of this application.
We'll start with, uh, questions on the remote end. Mr. Gingrich, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Williams, Jim?
You had mentioned before that there was a cease and desist order. Does anybody have, uh, any details as to the nature of that? Or what the activity was or what the violations were?
We want to ask your question.
Somebody mentioned there was a cease and desist.
Yes.
Right. Do you know what, have any details of what the nature of that was?
The cease and desist involves the overall conditions and operation, commercial vehicles coming and going, and the condition of the property. The intent of that order was to precipitate this application in the one before the planning and zoning to clean up the site once and for all.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Masbraco, two questions.
Mr. Ramada? How did you determine the, uh, finished elevation?
Good question. So, uh, let me flip back here.
I don't have a set of plan, I don't know why.
I apologize, I didn't get a set. Um, but the gradient on the road right here is about 408, 410, and then it's about 440 here, and the wetlands are at about 408 as well. So we're at 424, 422, 420-ish. So that is right here where the road ties in. So from a future, uh, site standpoint, with the driveway and the site distances, that's where the proposed road, or proposed site drive would enter. So this grade right here is the grade we wanted to maintain into the site, but we didn't want to go, we still need to have positive, uh, pitch and drainage to this basin, so we couldn't go any lower than that. Um, but we did, this, there's already a significant portion of the site that are close to this grade in the center. So we wanted to just level it out, and again, it's, it's essentially based off that tie-in point on Garter Road, because you're at 420, 410.
Can't be all the higher.
Um, so as I mentioned before, if we go higher, then we're going to have to shift the drive off of Garter Road in the future, and I'm not sure if we'll be able to achieve the site distances that we need pulling it out of that intersection.
Why, I'm sorry, but I was.
The road does bend, um, in this area. So. But again.
With a line of sight from that driveway now, because, you know, there's enough space before that other bend where you can't see?
That's correct, yes. We actually would prefer to go lower, but, um, we, again, needed positive pitch to, uh, this basin, and we also did not want to disturb the future septic areas. The, the grades that we were looking at, um, for the buildings in the future were about 422, 424 here at this pad, if you will, and then this pad was at about 418, 420. Because again, there is a significant.
Where you're coming in from the road is where?
Is right here. So we have to split the.
That elevation?
This is, uh, 422, 424 right here.
It's quite, it's quite steep going up into the site now.
Currently, yes. Yes.
So that's going to be well above the lower building?
No, it'll be, uh, this is. No, it'll be, this is 418, 420 here. Let me show you the plan that we put forth before. So this is potentially what we're looking like in the future. This is just a concept plan that was submitted as part of the planning and zoning application, or will be submitted as part of the planning and zoning application because they require it. But your drive will be right in this vicinity. And then I believe this is at 420, and then 422, 424 here. Because Commissioner Hall, or Chairman Hall, you are correct, there is currently a steep drive into the site.
And that would become more.
More in line with the road, that is correct. And you would still be elevated here. So again, this is at 408, 410. So this is up 10, 12 feet from this corner. And again, that was because they're septic, you know, here, here, and then this area. And the wetlands are at 408. We didn't want to go below. It's a little bit further than north there. We maintained the existing access point here, which is in the center of Garter Road. Yeah, we maintained the existing. So the future drive will be a little bit farther north, in the same vicinity.
Probably the picture is below finished grade, or is that still coming like a little bit? Or it's obviously low because of the picture?
Yes, so this is below the 422, 424. So this, if we're depicting grades in the site, this is the higher portion here, which we'll have the rock face. This area right here is currently lower than we're proposing, so this would be in. And then this, this significant pile of material that was left as part of a previous owner's operation. So this would come down. And then the next pile extends this way. And then there'll be a small 6 to 8-foot rock face here. Again, this is where the site currently comes in, and you go up, I would say, a good 10 feet into the site.
So the next thing I want to discuss is that for 109,000 yards, I want to propose a whole scale house and a scale.
Correct.
Which kind of, I don't know. I mean, I've been around a lot of these sites, but it seems kind of like a small volume to go through all that hassle. And they're also going to have one right down the road.
Yeah.
There's a scale house, there's a building there right now.
Correct. I believe our client is open to not having a truck scale on site. We did want to show it, but I believe you're correct. If he's going to weigh the material, he's going to bring it to Pepper Street to be weighed.
I'm wondering for an impact purpose, and it's not, I don't know if that's necessary. Probably a little bit to do with us. But he's got the whole operation, the state yard operation right down the road. Unless he just take the rock there.
We are completely open to, or in terms of the whole operation. He does want to blast and crush it here, and then in terms of exporting it, he'll bring it to Pepper to get sized smaller or.
Or primary, bring it down to six inch minus.
Yeah.
No, it's like opening a quarry in a way, you know? It's just that to have one quarter mile down the road.
If you went to the site today, you'd say this is a quarry.
Well, watch.
There are huge piles of it, they are.
Top of the cellar, of course.
They are cleaning, screening, crushing. I mean, there were piles of gravel that had to be 30 feet high of various grades of size today.
Right.
So I'd say this application is really, as Rick said, to clean up and get legal.
Correct.
Basically.
And also like to continue the original process, which was to make it flat.
Right.
But I'm just thinking, if you had a state art facility down the road, and, you know, want to be less impactful. I mean, it's, I don't know, it seems like it's almost like a logical maybe thing, but like to allow, like, for instance, I don't know if the tire brakes match up, right? That may be the issue. But to have truck track fix there, to go there, and then to go to the other place, and to have a dust control facility, you know, over here, but then be doing the same operation, you know, stone throws away, no pun intended. To, you know what I mean? I'm just wondering if that's an option for him as an alternative to, you know, this app. You know, he's going to get the same end result. And there is a little bit, maybe a little bit more inconvenience, but less cost on this site. What I mean?
Yeah, I was going to bring this up, if I may, before planning and zoning, but I'll bring it up here. I think you may be concerned this would become a quarry, but our client is not going to be taking this material to the open market. He's going to be, he is a site contractor, and he plans to use his material. So, you know, although there is a truck scale here and scale house, as I mentioned before, we're open to getting rid of that, if you will. He's going to be using this material. So as opposed to your typical.
Same place. I mean, he's got his material, he has it at, you know, Monroe Agribusiness Recycling. He's going to get it from there.
He's going to bring it there, exactly.
He's going to get it from there. If he has a job, he has his own material.
Correct. They're going to bring the material there to get this down to a pad. And then, you know, we just went through 467 and 45 Pepper. From there, it'll go to where it has to be. But there's not going to be, you know, other trucks besides our clients going in and out here is what I'm trying to get at. And I was going to bring it up before planning and zoning, but I would figure I'd mention it now because you're asking the questions regarding the operation, so.
I just think in the, in the, in the, what am I trying to say? We're going to ask for a feed and crew alternative, whatever, you know, or what's the other option? That is a very feasible alternative to impact the site, get the job done, but have less impact on the site. Not a design alternative, but.
Rob Pryor for the applicant. I guess the scale house is a problem, right? That's not a problem. Because if he was hauling stuff off the site, or if he was hauling material off the site to directly to one of his jobs, he might want to know what that quantity was, right?
Right, well, he makes.
Because that's how he gets paid for that.
Are legal, but, you know, people do rock excavation all the time, and they don't have a scale house.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out if it's a processing aspect of the thing on the site, or if it's, because the scale house, I'm confused why the scale house would bother you.
What could really bother me so much is that, you know, people have gotten greedy.
Right.
Look, we've learned that here. So, you know, it does give it more of, you know, we're not the ones that decide whether something is considered a quarry or not. We're not, that's not our thing. But certainly, having a scale house makes it look like you're going to be selling it off to the general public, and you're doing that right down the road.
Right.
I mean, we go, again, I'm, you know, I'm just thinking big picture kind of thing. It's not that I'm going to say you can't have it. I'm just questioning.
Yeah, I guess.
You need to have it.
Right, I guess that's why, the confusion, and I'm sorry, because I might just be missing the point here. The confusion for me is that if, if we're talking about, we don't want a processing on the site, that's an issue, right? That's an issue. I don't know if it's your issue.
There's some kind of process, it's got to happen.
Right, right.
Drilling holes in the rock and putting diameter, it's a process. Right, and then you're, you know, and then so. It's not like they got two quarries like in the same neighborhood.
Right, in essence, I know. Wait, the road's got a lot of quarries though.
There are dozens over the years. But what I'm saying is that, you know, you're having two, the same operations going on so close to each other. It would just seem like, yeah, the ideal situation would be to do it all right there, not pick it up and bring it somewhere else. That's ideal. But you don't have much other, you know, I'm just thinking of it as a, throwing out something that could maybe, if some people have, and maybe it's not even our commission.
I think that might be a point, and I think that might be a recommendation to planning and zoning that you're not selling, you're not retailing material out of the site. And that certain, planning and zoning could certainly make that a condition.
Oh, they will.
Yeah, and so I guess, I'm just, I'm just trying to address the concern, right? I don't know what is.
Yeah, well, again, I'm just thinking, you know, kind of thinking out loud, thinking like, what's, you know, just to have, just having two of the same thing going, just, I don't know.
I mean, I think that's, that's the reality of it, because like you say, they're going to process here. They're not going to haul blasted rock. They're not going to put that in trucks and haul it to the other site, probably.
But even if it just went through, you know, a big jaw to get. I've been thinking, if, I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of solutions before there's actually a problem, right? So I've been thinking the whole thing through.
I mean, I think if you were running this thing, you would say, yeah, I want to process it to what I want to use so I can move the material once, right? That's the most efficient way to do it.
But when I saw this, initially, you're presenting a scale house, we're seeing, okay, we got two quarries on basically the same road.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it. Is that overkill? I get it, I think the, I think the, you know, as Rick had said about how, you know, it's not going to be allowed to be a retail operation here, or you're not going to be selling off the site. I think that maybe should be said.
To comfort?
Yeah, that explains, you know, a lot, and then, you know. I mean, just putting, you know, half the loader, the new loaders that come out these days have scales in them. So if he has to make sure he's up more than 22 tons of his truck, he doesn't have to invest, you know, $75,000 in a scale house. And pay for all the monitoring and the testing of it every month or so, whatever. I'm just, you know, just picking up the whole thing. I know too much, maybe.
Then why don't we move on? Ask my question. Okay. I'm, two questions. Wetlands above, I guess that's north. Have you looked at, I'm trying to look at the map here and see what you may be, as you're lowering the property, creating this rock face. It's reminiscent of another site where we have a rather large rock face.
Yeah.
And we're doing restoration behind it. Are we going to create, are you going to create a problem there where the neighbors are going to be impacted?
So this rock face, I believe prior to the.
Zardoo, whatever they did.
This rock face came down this way, and it shedded water to the left. So this wetland continues up off the screen, and that's all at 408, 410. This is like the high point, and it comes down here.
Okay.
So there's no wetlands up on top. I understand your concern, and I'm saying that, again, the wetland is down 50 to 60 feet from this high point up here.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I wasn't.
Yeah, no worries.
You've marked this, you've described this to us, how you're going to protect it. I'm just looking at the other aspects that.
Yeah, I understood. There was probably.
Down the road, there's a large wetland system on the other side of Garter. So it's not like there's anything above it really that would drain.
I, yeah, that was my question, so. And the other, the other question I have is those piles. That you had in the photograph, which are quite, have those been tested?
I do not know the answer to that question. I apologize. I believe they are like crushed stone and prior screenings from like the rock crushing operation.
Okay.
But we can have a test done on them if that would be, I'm sure planning and zoning will require one of us, so.
What's the intent to use? Are those just going to be leveled?
Levelled out, yes, yes, exactly.
And I think we can leave that then to planning and zoning.
Thank you.
Okay, those were my questions. I think you've described to, I would feel much more comfortable if the commissioners had a chance to walk the site. It's, as you can see, the entrance was raising questions. I think it would be advisable for us to do that before we take it to deliberation. If that could be arranged, since it is an active site, we need to be walked through.
Well, it should be, right? It should be.
Shouldn't be, correct.
Right? Am I correct?
We'll talk to Mr. Brasso about.
I had a rather large Volvo loader almost backed over when I was pulling up the driveway. So I would, I would be concerned.
We also have some, you know, we also have some comments from the city engineer that we're working through, so.
That's what I was, I was starting to look at his.
We have a little bit of work to do to resolve some of that, not significant, but, so I think, you know, the fact that the commission wants to walk the site, I think that's a reasonable question.
Let's, yeah, any other questions before we? No questions. We can arrange a site walk.
Right, so we'll continue this.
Clark.
Mr. Gingras, comment?
No questions.
Okay. Yeah, let's continue this and do a site walk, and then we can probably wrap it up for the next.
Well, we'll take this, we'll put this on the December 7.
Continue this.
And I'll arrange that.
Okay.
Are we going to open this up to public questions? Both.
Continue to, we should, yes.
Public question, yeah, yes. Who is that asking the question? We are now open for public questions.
So I'm a resident on Garter Road, and I just have.
Could you state your name and address?
Michael Antolini, 31 Garter Road.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure that I understand this. So it's an active work site, and it's been an active work site for a long time because I see, I see all the activity that goes on every single day. But yet, there's a cease and desist order going on. So how is any of this allowable?
It isn't allowable. The property owner is, is in contempt, and the land use boards will make a determination what the next step will be. So the applicant is hearing you loud and clear, and is going to take it back to the property owner. So the land use boards are doing their due diligence, and if appropriate legal action has to be taken, it will be. We're going through the phase of determining what is happening. The board members need to visit the site, and appropriate action will be taken if necessary.
Well, the board members may be shocked. I mean, I know that I've already heard the activity that's over there, but, you know, I sat into one, sat in on one of the zoning meetings this summer, and the engineer, I forgot what the company's from, who's representing Brasso, stated when asked, is there anything going on over there as far as activity? And he said, not to my knowledge. I don't know if he was lying to you, or if he just wasn't involved at all. But, I mean, we all can't be blind to this, that this has been going on for a long time. By the way, prior to him, it's been going on for 15 years that they were going to build a industrial building there, and they basically used it as a quarry and passed it off to other people to use it as a quarry. It's been a quarry forever. Anyways, I mean, call it what you want, a Phase One of preparing a construction site for two buildings, but it's a rock quarry, and it's a five-year permit that he's asking for. And I'm questioning this because the trucks that go up and down the road all day long, the red Grasso trucks, it's an inordinate amount. I mean, there's more Grasso trucks that go up and down that road than all the other cars combined. Yet, we put a scenic road sign on Garter Road, and we allow this to happen. And we've allowed it to go on for years. And I just, I just, I don't know. And you might, you might hear that the gravel and the dirt and the soil and the, and everything else is for the work or the debacle on Pepper Street, but it's, it's not. I know it's not. I see where the trucks go. I'm sometimes behind them. I mean, Pepper Street is, the culvert is all that remains as the major part of the work. And there's no, there's, today was ridiculous, the amount of trucks going back and forth. I mean, I don't know why nobody is doing anything about it when he's doing, he's got a temporary electrical service over there. How do you take out a permit for a temporary electrical service when you don't have a permit to do the work? This just shouldn't be allowed. I mean, is he bullying you guys that he's just going to continue on?
Mr. Chairman, as I indicated, this is part of the due process, and.
Yes.
And the commission has gone through this before in another location. It doesn't happen overnight, and appropriate action will be taken.
Yeah.
This commission has our concerns, and we appreciate hearing your concerns and the information you're providing. That will all be put to good use, so thank you very much for your comments. Please continue to attend.
I will.
Are there any other comments from remote users?
Hi there. Yes, I'm also, my name is Catherine Smith. I live at 68 Garter Road. I just wanted to, you know, echo what my neighbor just said. The amount of trucks, the Grasso trucks and other trucks that drive down our road is just an extreme disturbance.
Yes, go ahead. Whoever else, could they, could anyone else mute, please?
I just wanted to, you know, take this opportunity to state how. I just wanted to, you know, take this opportunity to state how much of a disturbance it is to our livelihoods and actually even so much as our well-being. I don't have to set an alarm clock every morning because the Grasso trucks wake me up as early as 6:00 AM, 6:15. I have a small child and another one on the way and it's, it's a very big concern of mine how the trucks just are so loud and so constant. And quite honestly, if I had known this was a staple of living on this road three years ago when I purchased this house, I, I might not have because of how, how awful it is. I also just want to say, I work from home and I can't even have my windows open during the day because of the trucks that drive by. You know, I'm kind of saying the same thing over and over, but I, I just wanted to take this opportunity to also say how, how as a scenic road, the town, you know, it is, it is not, it is taking away from the peacefulness and the scenery of that supposed scenic road that it's supposed to be.
Thank you very much for your comments. We, we appreciate that. Is there anyone else, anyone else remote who'd like to speak? Is there anyone in attendance in the room tonight who'd like to speak? Not hearing anyone else. We will continue this hearing to?
December 7th.
December 7th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have application hearing determination. IWC 2022-16. 417 Main Street, proposed filling and grading.
Mr. Chairman, that should be clarified a little bit. It's really piping an intermediate water course also consisting of filling and grading.
Okay, I, I drove by, this is a, there are two businesses on this.
Right, you have an intermittent water course and the property owner wants to pipe it.
Okay.
Right.
For purpose?
Oh, for, that's just, yeah, just to improve the overall conditions.
Under the parking lot?
That's adjacent to it.
Adjacent to the parking lot.
Right. And you did receive a letter from the Aquarian Water Company. They're opposed to it. That will be part of the exhibit for the, the meeting, depending on how you want to do this, public hearing or non-public hearing.
That's a fairly congested area there with businesses, Vazee's Restaurant.
Absolutely.
Main Street right there. Are you guys aware of where that is? We're talking about, right there's the Allstate Insurance Office and then the positive is behind it.
Yeah.
Right. We have a motion on, what type of hearing we'd like to see? Anyone?
Motion for public.
We have a motion for public. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing, 4417 Main Street. Shout out to ready to that?
Yep.
Very good. IWC 2022-17, 4 Main Street. Proposed construction of multi-use building.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is the actual project now for the, the site that was regraded.
And can we move to the other matters and then we'll do that last?
Sure.
Or if, I don't know what works, since we screwed up your time already.
Do that, do it last.
Okay, we'll do this last. We're going to move this to the last item because Commissioner Romano refused himself.
Okay.
So we'll do deliberations on completed hearings. We have one deliberation tonight?
But you have two. 2210 and 2214.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Let's do 2210. 46745 Pepper Street. Open it up for comments, discussion.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, before you start discussing it, these two particular applications do need a detailed resolution prepared. The other applications, when I was acting as wetlands, I, I took down very detailed notes. But I, I think these two applications should have draft resolutions prepared for the commission to review as a suggestion.
Okay.
And this is something we're going to do forward with Cheryl as a staff person too.
Okay.
So that's something that, it's your, it's your call. You may want to act on it and direct staff to write a, a resolution with the conditions as you deem fit, or you can do a favorable consensus to direct staff to write a favorable resolution and then bring it up to the next meeting. So you have two options.
Okay, so we, the two options are?
To act on it or to do a favorable or unfavorable consensus and direct staff.
Okay. But before we do either of those, we should discuss and?
And then you, right, that's part of your deliberation, right?
Correct. Let's go through, let's do that and then when we've completed the deliberation, we can discuss.
Because we want to get back to preparing the resolutions like you had in the past.
Right, right. We want to be very clear on those.
Absolutely.
Okay. Comments? I would look to you, Keith, I guess first because you've been the most vocal one on Pepper Street.
Well, I think they've pretty much addressed all our concerns that we've had, you know, I had as well. And I know they have their maintenance protocol, which is probably reviewed by town engineer, right? And so as long as it makes him happy, I don't think it can be any more problematic. The commission and I think if we, if we give them like, you know, the condition of, you know, site inspections, you know, monthly or whatever.
Monthly reports.
Yeah, monthly site inspection report. I don't know necessarily that the, they got to have the engineer do it, but, because it's construction will be done. But just have our staff visit monthly, you know, during rounds of doing something else and just making sure that once a month it's visited. If we see a failure of what they proposed, then, you know, they have to come back in with a whole new application to solve the problem.
At least to address the issues, right?
Right. I mean, if some things are addressable, some things are like, you know, fix this, then we'll be back, you know, in a week. Or however, whatever we think is real, like we could decide that, like if they have, you know, a pile of sand or fines or blocking up a storm drain, right? We could say, you know, we're going to be back here tomorrow. It better be cleaned up, right? Or you're shut down. Or we can, we can kind of set all these different, you know, you know, things. Or if like their wall that they're saying is going to hold back the surge.
If the wall could get blown out.
If the wall gets blown out, that's a, that's a major failure of their present, you know, of their application and that's a cease and desist until you guys fix, you know, come in with an application to just fix it or fines, whatever that, you know, if that's the case. So we have to, you know, or anything that we see in the wetlands, like, you know, someone, you know, whatever, anything that's affecting, not just the operations, failure of the structures, but just flat out anything that fails the wetlands protections.
A lot of the operations. Are, are under planning and zoning.
Absolutely.
But anything that drains out into the wetlands or into the? Different drain basins. That should be our concern. So we'll, we'll have to work. And that's where you say you'll draw up something that coordinates between zoning and wetlands.
Yeah.
To make sure everything is covered, our concerns are covered, whether they're handled by zoning or not.
Right.
Yeah, because I think that's the, the biggest issue. I hate to say that it's maybe a lack of confidence in the applicant and what they've done on that site already and what we see going on at their other application that they, I do believe they need to be monitored. As we understood that, that part of the work here was to get this site in compliance. It was already a violation. So I think the detailed requirements, approval factors need to be.
Well, that, so is the direction, I mean, the other commissioners have to talk whether or not you have a favorable consensus and direct staff to write a favorable resolution?
Well, I'm, I'm not there yet. I don't think we're, we've, we've got to that point, but I'm just saying, I believe the write-up, whatever it is, should we go there, needs to be detailed enough that it withstands any legal issues.
Right, as opposed to preparing a decision tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. Because there's a lot of problems.
Yeah.
Cheryl, do you, do you recall any situation like this similar where they would have put a condition like this in the beginning?
In the, in the beginning?
Like as part of the approval?
Have, have monthly site inspections?
Yeah.
By staff? It's not the norm. A lot of times is that the people on site have to, you know, contact our office and let us know how things are going or after a storm, after a major storm event, they let us know how things are going. But I'm out in the site, I'm going to be out in the sites a lot. Every week, every day, pretty much I'll be going out. So going out once a month to let them see me and, and know the site well and get to know them and have them contact me is not out of the realm of possibilities. I think it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, I think understanding where the construction of the site is taken underneath that wall, there's a, a road, a temporary road and watching that. Which flows right into the wetlands. If that's not monitored, cleaned up properly, restored properly, we could have a, a concern. So I think, I, I think what you're saying is monitoring, inspecting.
I think if regardless of, of who the applicant was or who the person was, I think it's, it's good policy when you're, you know, this is a new thing. This is a, this is a new part of the industry. Indoor recycling and crushing facilities. And usually in the past, this was all done in wide open big quarry settings where they have detention basins, where they have sedimentation ponds and, you know, big equipment around to just, you know, push this over here and, and then, you know, dig out the, the pods real easy when they fill up and let it dry over in a corner and haul it off for a fill job. This is like, this is all high intensity, right above a wetlands, you know, and regardless of who the operator is, I think it's just good policy to keep an eye on it because it's not like we're building something and in 18 months it's done and everything's finished and now it's just cars and trucks and operations. It's, it's like, it's like a, it's a long-term construction site. It's not like they're going to, yeah, they're going to get a CO for the building, they're going to get a CO for the walls and everything else, but it's basically just a forever construction site. And while you have a construction site and you're under construction until you have the CO and everything's checked, you're constantly inspected. So if you look at it in that regard, it's, it's open for, for inspection because there's never really a.
It's never finished, right?
It's never really finished.
Right.
It's not a finished site. It's, it's constantly doing, doing excavation work. So granted, it's manufacturing. So under like all the, the rules and everything and, and codes, it's considered manufacturing. But it's the same exact thing they have to be doing to actually build the facility, which is under, you know, a permit and it has to be getting inspected. So I think it's very.
Admit the timeframe and say, no matter what, it's only good and we got to go through some sort of a review process every year, every other year?
That's what I mentioned.
Time frame.
That's what I mentioned.
Brought that up.
But it's kind of like, you can't, you know, you're giving someone a permit due to construct something and have it operation. That then like reapply, I guess, someone, what someone mentioned, I can't remember. It was like, it's not really, it's a lot of work and it's, it's not really the right vehicle. Having the, having the inspections, I think is.
And I think probably more frequent inspections while it's under construction and once things are established and operational.
Right.
A frequency can be determined for the right amount of time.
And also, I mean, maybe we shouldn't conflate these two, but we have this same applicant on a different piece of property who's already ignoring cease and des, cease and desist orders.
That, that is a.
So that needs to be factored into this. How do we solve this? Because if he's ignoring our cease and desist on one property, who's to say he's not going to ignore it on the other one?
While it's an operation.
Well, yeah. He might say, oh, I'll do it and then not. And what do you, what do I care? You guys told me to stop and I didn't stop, so you didn't stop me. So I'm just going to keep going anyway.
It's there.
I guess I'm going to ask how the town would see regulating this.
Oh, this is part of the, the regulation. If, if this board is alarmed enough, you can direct staff to consult with the, the special land use attorney. If you don't see, if you don't see remediation in the immediate future. That's why I want to let the residents know.
Right.
We are no longer allowing this to continue. It's before a land use board.
Because I.
That hasn't happened before.
I personally think these two need to be tied together because I don't feel comfortable approving this in any way, shape or form while he's doing things shaky, shady on the other side. I, I think they both have to be.
I'm, I'm. They're feeding each other something.
Yeah, they're interconnected.
Yeah, interconnected.
I'm hearing the commission directing staff. We better get a clear explanation of what's going on.
Yeah.
The applicant heard it loud and clear tonight. The residents expect it and they deserve it.
Before we would approve anything, I think.
Oh, that goes without saying. You got to get a handle. What is going on? You made your application. We know. Why are you doing what you're doing?
Let me throw this out there. Is there any other, like DEP, MSHA, anybody that have any other thing to say about this operation or?
They've only just the town. No, they can provide assistance, but they leave it up to local jurisdiction.
So it's a local jurisdiction, so?
Southwestern Conservation District could help us.
Right, but do they levy like serious fines?
No, no, no.
No, but, but, but.
We have to initiate.
But MSHA does.
Yeah.
And DEP will, right? They have more power.
Right. If they so choose to do, they like to leave it to the local jurisdiction.
I don't know if MSHA would really follow them.
We did this for the 64 Cambridge Drive.
Like is there, is there, are we, are we going to be like attaching any DEP regulations out to this?
Oh, absolutely. That's what the chairman's saying. Make sure you, we do a.
We have those there that if they were to like just blatantly disregard this disapproval and, and the conditions, then we can simply just defer it to DE, refer, refer it to DEP and let them come in for.
Further enforcement.
Further enforcement and take, you know, the action. So, so there could, there can, one of the conditions, I guess, is that, you know, that's follows DEP regulations. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, applicable sites that are disturbed to five acres or more, you know, you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
Because are, are we aware of any place else that this sort of process, and I'm, I'm sticking to Pepper Street now. We don't want to mix them up. But the indoor processing that you're going to, is there a, another business doing this kind of work in this area that?
Norwalk.
Okay, Norwalk. And is there, so there is some point of reference that could be used that make, that would probably be planning and zoning would do that part of it?
No, but we're all getting educated because we all want that facility to work. So it's.
You got to have it. You got to have it.
It's a necessary evil, you know?
This is just like if you have a restaurant and you get your grease traps catch fire, you get shut down. I mean, this, it needs to be that sort of thing that can be done here.
Yeah.
Well, they're, they're coming in front of us and they've already spent money on plans and they're here, which means they want to do something with the property. Can't we just say, you know what? We don't even want to hear any more of this. Stop what you're doing and maybe we can continue.
Right, you're absolutely, they heard you loud and clear.
What's that? Talking about Garter?
You got to stick Garter.
Yeah.
No, we're talking Pepper.
We're going to stay on Pepper.
Well, you're going back.
Fully in deliberation on Pepper.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to separate.
We, we.
Garter, I mean, Pepper.
And that's why we.
My concern, my concern is that they just say, okay, $150 fine is the cost of doing business every day.
That's my.
And we're just going to keep doing what we do and every month we'll cut the town a check. No.
The neighbors will hate us. The two applications are separate. And we, there's no way we can make a dependency from one to the other.
Staff has been discussing this on the side. Once again, we have our special land use council. And there's a variety of issues going on right now. We'll, we'll be discussing all of these issues. Clearly the issue at hand is the ongoing activity. We got to get it stopped. How do we do it? The residents deserve it.
Well, one thing I have to say about it, and this is going to blend over to two applications, that if the guy who's in front of us, you know, you know, giving us the answers we want on this Pepper Street application, yet, you know, down the road, he's ignoring stuff. Um, it's kind of like, if I was I'd be like, hey, I gotta, I wanna clean up my act around here because I'm asking, you know, for this grant, this, you know, very, very profitable business that he's about to open on Pepper Street. You know, he's gonna invest seven, eight million dollars in the facility, and he's gonna be raking in, because he's gonna be the only game in town. He's gonna be getting paid when the stuff comes in, he's gonna be getting paid when it comes out. So
Well, and he's also going to be sourcing his materials that are so profitable at his other site.
Yeah, and he's also gonna also be having his own materials for his jobs he has contracts with. So instead of paying somebody else, another company, and, and paying their profit margin, he's making it, so, so he's got a very profitable venture here. And, you know, we just want him to know that he's gonna do it right. Now, Garter Street's a different, different animal. You know, um, and I think really just we just have to protect, you know, the town so we don't have, you know, what we dealt with two years ago again. I think that's the biggest charge here. I mean, I don't think there's any problem with the operation as the sta- as stated. You know, it seems like all the right things are in place protecting the wetlands now, now that, you know, they revised. Um, it just, we gotta make sure they stick to it.
So we could, at this point, defer to land use staff
Mm-hmm.
to develop a set of, uh, what, what could turn into, uh, an, an approval with requirements.
Yep, this has to be done, this must have been done. So I'm sure Barbara could find some kind of language where this has been done before. And I even think some, some of the regulated D E P um, operations do get periodically inspected, right? No, no one gets a free, like, you know, pass for forever.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be using Venmarina.
Oh, okay.
So, because I, I personally, I am not comfortable trying to make a determination. I don't have the expertise or the understanding. Um, so I would, I would not I would not be able to vote on this one way or another at this point.
So, so direct staff to prepare.
Well, I'm, I wanna make sure everybody has a say here on what, what you guys feel you can, if you feel you can
So we're all talking about regulation right now. We're talking, not regulation, oversight. It's all about oversight at this point.
Oversight.
I don't think anybody, or, not speaking for everybody, but no one has mentioned anything that they have some serious problems with the plan, and they want something changed as a condition. It's all just about oversight at this point.
Right, right.
So we can get that
It's a good point. So, but, but let's ask that, let's make sure. I, I, I think you and I are in agreement.
Yeah.
Um, we're talking about the plans as presented tonight, the, the information we were given, do you find that that was acceptable? They've resolved your issues?
I, I agree. I think as far as what they put pen to paper, we've all reconciled our concerns and said, yeah, this makes sense. And now it's, like you said, the credibility of, are they gonna do what they say after?
Okay.
And so I'm, I'm, I'm on board with you guys so far.
Okay, let's check, uh, Commissioner Gingrich. We're trying to qualify at this, we're qualifying at this point that the information presented uh, by the applicant about the construction of the site and the operation of the site uh, as presented tonight, are you okay with that? At that level?
Yes.
Okay, because what we're talking about here is deferring this to land use and some expertise to draw up a set of oversight requirements, monitoring these kind of factors that uh, we don't feel comfortable making those decisions ourselves. Are you in alignment with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I think that's Was there, I just remembered this. Was there an existing wall that's on the property and they're making it higher, and we had asked them to have it looked at to see, is it safe enough to continue building on top of it?
Structural integrity report. Yeah, and they provided.
And it's buried.
I checked it out.
Now they're not building on top of it.
Now they're moving in front of it, yeah.
Moving back from it.
They changed their approach.
The structure, they showed the
Much better approach.
The wall, because that was a big wall.
Was it?
Yes, yeah.
Um, Yeah, I like that proposal. That was much better than what they suggested before.
Yeah.
Well, we're not gonna push it too far, I promise.
Yeah. So the, the, the wall here appears to be well constructed. The plan to bring it back makes sense, right?
No, they came up with a great solution.
Yep, I totally agree with that.
Okay.
All right, staff knows what it needs to do.
Okay.
So do we continue this determination? Is that the proper? No, you just direct staff to consult with the special land use attorney and prepare the, the appropriate language.
And you bring it back to the
Bring it back during a determination at another point, okay.
Okay.
So we're finished with that? Our other application? Oh, no, we're gonna
Two oh seven Spring Hill.
Yeah. Yeah, you have two oh seven Spring Hill.
Two oh seven.
Two seventeen? Two oh seven?
Two oh seven.
Okay. This was the small estate holdings building.
Comments, questions?
I don't know, right? Here we go, you know, I think it's all there. It's not a very complicated project or, or site, but there is that open gravel parking area that I think we have to have some kind of condition on that. Um, they didn't offer any type of, you know, what the alternatives would be. Um, feel like we give them the condition that, you know, nothing, because they said right out of their mouth, nothing's toxic is gonna be stored. So it's either in a container or laying on the ground. No one puts anything toxic in a container anyway. So, so that means if there's a vehicle parked there and it's got gasoline or anything else, it's in a, it's
Uh, if it's, if it's for estate items as they're suggesting, somebody's gonna have a boat, somebody's gonna have an R V, somebody's gonna have a trailer,
That's, that's a
And that's where they're gonna put it. So I, I'm, I understand what he was, he was, I think he was suggesting they're not gonna have fifty-five gallon drums of toxic waste.
Right.
I don't think he meant, I'm not gonna store a car there.
To your point, though, you're right. But my point is that, my thinking is that more along lines that he ends up subbing it out.
Right.
And now, so those things are brought in temporarily. They don't, R V isn't, isn't, they're not signing a five-year lease to keep an R V
Right.
parked there. It's supposed to be there until they sell it and it's gone.
So how do you define temporary storage? That's
Is there, is there language the town has to? Oh, yeah, we did, uh, with zoning. So once again, why don't you, uh, direct staff? Is this something that?
I was just thinking, the Stevenson property?
Yeah, absolutely. We, we had a lot of discussion on that.
Yeah.
Everything had to be paved under that, right?
That's what it is. And, uh, because you got the gravel issue where you feel comfortable
That's a concern, yeah.
He had mentioned they, they considered paving it, but that he was gonna have a runoff issue.
Yeah, there wasn't enough.
But he, he didn't get into the statistics. He didn't say, my only way to solve this is if I had to re-engineer things. He just said, yeah, we considered it, but we prefer gravel. So I don't know.
Yeah, the detention pods would have
Yeah, staff needs to talk to the applicant again and determine if there's alternatives.
Right.
And once again, when you have a situation like that, it's hard to make a decision tonight.
But then, all you see is patio
Resolution, right.
All he said was, only problem was patio
He used a very, yes.
He's saying, say boat, R V, like you're saying, which makes sense, because you know, now that's more of like, I, I, I don't know much about, I know something about estate sales, but you know, that's almost like if that seat, those are C's things. I don't know that those, you know, how many times do people say, well, my husband died, so come and take the R V and bring it to these things? Usually they'll just sell it, right, from there. But when you have
But you don't know.
Right, I don't know. I mean, and again, we're digging into details of how businesses are run,
Correct.
which kind of like has an impact.
Well, and it runs on future use. Like, okay, this guy's got this great business today, but in a year or two, maybe not, and now he's got this building and he wants to rent it out to guys like you that have heavy equipment, and I'm gonna store it over here because I gotta place the moment.
Yeah, tree guy, landscaping.
And these are good points. I just wonder if we're not venturing into P and Z territory here. They're good questions. I mean, I get some, we're having a good conversation, but
All the questions, yeah.
Is it?
Because we have, they're proposing to us gravel
Right.
out of buffer
That's the issue.
Wetlands upperland review area that, you know, is fine if the stuff that's gonna be put on it can't have any negative effect except for a wind blowing it into
Right, right. So, but the issues of the business are really outside of what we've got. But we get right down to the point. Gravel, potential toxic materials, I, I would I would recommend that we defer that to staff to put the proper language around that. Yeah, and then take it up again at December seventh on the deliberations, see if you feel comfortable.
Tell the applicant to clarify. The applicant may not have an issue with putting a tighter restriction on the gravel right now. Then it kind of makes it easier for us.
Rather than reopen the
No, because it's closed.
Yeah.
I was kind of, I was kind of egging them on to, you know, end the thing.
Well, staff can talk to the applicant, so, so we can get And we'll come up with alternatives.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna pick, I like, alternative B.
Yep.
Yeah.
Markers, right, something I had mentioned about wetland markers?
Yeah, we're gonna include that, yeah.
Those are pretty easily.
But that's pretty consistent.
They, they should be in every application.
Absolutely, yeah.
That, that, part of the requirements, yeah. We shouldn't have to ask, right? You should just be done.
That's, that's, uh, one of the templates that we use, so
Right, okay. That driveway went, like, touching the wetlands, right?
Yeah, it's tight through there.
Yep.
So if a vehicle just, oops, takes a right and into the drink he goes.
It's already
It did, like that now?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, so there's, that place has been mined out. There was, there was a gravel pit for a little while.
Shocker.
Yeah.
Lot of activity going on the last forty years.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. All right, so we're finished with that one? We've passed that to you, so, uh, I W C twenty twenty-two fourteen is over to land use. All right? Closes out section C deliberation for I W C agent activities report. I have none for this meeting, Mr. Chairman. This is something that, uh, staff will be providing in the immediate future. So we move down to minutes.
We didn't, we didn't do seventeen yet.
No, we, for, like, believe
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna cover that last.
Okay. So minutes, I believe we received minutes for, uh, was there three meetings worth of minutes? Yeah, so please review those and we'll put those on the next agenda. Take those next time, right? Regulation Amendment Committee? None at this time. Once again, that's something we'll be taking up in the immediate future. We will be, yes, definitely. You know, the chairman will be creating that subcommittee. You'll assign members and, uh, take it from there. Uh, Public Outreach Committee, no activity I'm aware of. Appointment of Wetlands Enforcement Agent Cheryl A. Valerie. Well. Need a motion at a second.
I have a motion to approve.
Thanks.
Okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right, okay.
Twenty twenty-three meeting schedule. I've got one in your packet. We acted on it at the last meeting, right? Acted on it. I signed it tonight. It's the same structure as we had this year. Right. We don't need a second. One meeting in July, one in August, one in November, one December. And you can always call a special meeting. Okay. And let's please, so, a call for adjournment? No, you gotta go back to, uh, for Main Street.
What about the mains?
Minutes, we're gonna, we're gonna review Table, table of minutes, review them, we'll pick them up next Back to seventeen, yes. For Main Street. Good night, Mr. King. Thank you for disrupting your schedule. What you get for asking questions? They're good questions. We appreciate it. I W C twenty twenty-two dash seventeen for Main Street during determination. Okay, Mr. Chairman, now we have the mixed-use, uh, proposed development for the property right over the, uh, Trumbull Town Line on the right side for actual, uh, development. Building's been, uh, raised and now they're ready to, uh, proceed. Okay. So now, uh, commission has to decide how do you want to proceed with it? It's mixed use, that means a lot of that work will fall to planning and zoning.
Mm-hmm.
But we are still dealing with the aquatic river immediately behind it. Uh, they have, when I drove by there today, they were